Well, welcome to our first informal town hall meeting for our Harnett United group. Just to give you a little background, Harnett United came upon about with, from a spinoff from the 401 asphalt plant Facebook group. And once we started peeling the onion skins away, if you will, we realized there were other issues in our county and we want to be able to highlight the good and the bad and work together to make things better for our county. So, welcome to our first town hall and we have our first volunteer and we welcome Commissioner Matt Nickel and I'm gonna let you introduce yourself.
Well, thank you very much. I am Commissioner Matt Nickel. I am the District Five County Com- I gotta hold it all up here, don't I? Okay, I'm the District Five County Commissioner here in Harnett County. Thank you all for having me, I appreciate it. I was told everybody was gonna be nice and it's gonna be nice and informal and it'll be instructional yet informal, so I appreciate that, thank you so much. Harnett United, actually, I wanted to commend you, I actually love that name, I do. That's probably the biggest thing that not only the county or the state or the country, let alone the world is, is unity, so, great name choice.
Thank you. It was a collaborative effort and choice.
Is it recording on? So that's just for y'all to hear?
No, we're actually, can you hear us okay? Do you think they can hear us okay through? It is live, so hopefully somebody will chime in, we're trying to.
Is there some feedback? Anybody there?
Alright, if it's bad, we'll just get it from Roger. We'll download his copy and repost on YouTube if needed. Alright, so what was the reasons? What were the reasons that made you run for Commissioners? What were your main priorities? And we just want to get to know you better.
Okay. Simple enough. Well, my main reasons for running is I started off on the planning committee on the school board and I actually saw a breakdown in communication that was going on between the school board and the board at the time. After getting, you know, certain things done and certain pushback and feeling the frustrations, I, you know, and a culmination of other things, the 2A protection was going through with the county a few years ago. Myself and another group helped spearhead that operation, so, like I said, I've been up there at the podium before, speaking and talking and knowing what it's like to want some feedback or want some answers and, you know, kinda feel like things are falling on deaf ears and I, I will go ahead and speak for the rest of the board on this occasion. However, I don't believe everybody is invested on the Board of Commissioners and they all hear what's going on and they all are doing the best that they can and it's not falling on deaf ears. And sometimes things could be explained a little bit better, understanding like how we came to a conclusion and that, you know, it's like, okay, how did y'all get to that? And like, y'all kinda wanna know the why.
Yeah, it's not transparent to us, it's hard.
Exactly, so I've been there, I've been on that side of it, so I understand. I have five kids and I have a small business and Harnett County is my final stand. There isn't anywhere for me to, to run to on this earth, you know, people still come here to America in order to enjoy the freedoms and liberties that we have. There have been all across the world, been across the country, I've moved away from here, moved back, moved away, moved back and I always come back to here and Harnett County is my home and it's my final stand, so there's nowhere for me to run to. And instead of being a complainer and someone who would just gripe about something going on and wanting to see changes or I could have easily picked up my family and that was an opportunity at the time or an option, actually, pick up my family and move, you know, to somewhere else that has it, you know, quote unquote, figured out already.
You're a veteran, were you born here in North Carolina?
I was not, I was born in Pennsylvania, moved down here when I was six, seven years old, was raised in Wake County, so, went to Leesville Elementary, middle and high, so. I consider myself from North Carolina, over thirty years here, so. But it, this was my home and I wasn't gonna just let it roll over and I saw a few other people that were running at the time and didn't agree with them and their policies and their platforms or even just them personally, running. And I didn't wanna make an excuse, so I decided to run.
Well, good for you. And I think a few of us are in the same mind frame, but I'm not gonna say who. They'll eventually show themselves. So, you know, our group started with the asphalt plant and.
There was a second part to your question, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, no, it's fine, it's, I just realized now that you asked about like kinda my platform and.
Yes, go ahead and I know that one's very important for you.
Well, it is. Veterans in the, in the county are a big thing. If we, you know, had the purpose to serve others at one point in time, we always have the purpose to serve and definitely think that's something that we should give back to. The opioid crisis is probably one of the biggest things on my platform.
It's bigger than COVID.
And it's, and it's, I realize it's a lot bigger than me and that's where us, everyone together, cause I mean, it's in our schools and it's, it's probably, and that's one of the reasons why I decided to run for Commissioner also, it's, I started hearing horror stories of kinda things that were happening in the schools and I was like, I've got kids that go to that school, you know, and they're coming up through there and, you know, hey, now it's affecting me and there's a lot of things that parents don't really understand that are going on in the schools. Drugs are a big one, schools are an incubator for our future and that is the first place that is poisoning our youth, so that needs to be the main focus. But opioids, I mean, that's a, it's degradation to our society, that's one of the biggest things, I'm pretty sure everybody in this room is close to someone who's struggled with it personally and I mean, it's a disease, but it is something that we, there are ways to help out, you know, people who've been in that foxhole, just, you know, same thing with, a- a- any other issue, mental illness, you know, if you've been there before, you know, you know the way out and that, you know, it's our responsibility to help out those people.
And I do know that opiate deaths have surpassed COVID deaths, so it is a big concern.
Well, it's, it's always been a big concern, I really think the, the biggest issue is, and it's everywhere, okay, it's not, it's not just here, it's not just there, it's everywhere. The, the issue is, nobody's actually stepping up and saying, hey, I have, I have a problem, like, we have a problem, okay, and we need help, we need to go ahead and get some help here, you know, Harnett County may not have the most schools, right, but I sure want them to be the cleanest and the best.
Will some of that opiate class, the lawsuits, some of those monies be able to come to the county to help?
Yeah, that lawsuit that just got filed and won through Johnson, well, it was a settlement, the county will be receiving a portion of that money as well and we're gonna be using that for mental health and substance abuse.
Excellent.
And I had a couple of other things on my platform, biggest ones were economic development, which the county is, I'd say currently spearheading and doing a very good job of.
We'll want you to elaborate with that.
We, we, we have a lot more growth to, to tackle, however, we're on the right path, we have a plan finally and a program and we're actually working towards goals and that's the biggest thing and that I'm, I'm most proud of with the county. But economic development is huge, okay, instead, we are just humans on a tax farm, okay, we're down here and the county operates off of property taxes and obviously it's not enough to build new schools and pay for all the resources and everything that we need, so, that's, that's definitely a big, for everything that we want, all the needs and, you know, that's, that's how, how we pay for it instead of bleeding out our citizens.
Alright, so here comes the hard questions.
What?
Yes, here comes the hard questions. So, you know, you know that our group started as a spinoff from the asphalt group and because an asphalt plant was being built in our backyard, the property, those seventy acres that has a lot of wetlands included with the Niels Creek going through it, was zoned industrial thirty-two years ago, which many of us weren't aware of that, it wasn't on our radar. But with all this overdevelopment and all of a sudden, you know, just by chance neighbor sees what's going on and did a little research and found out. So where do you stand on having an asphalt plant so close to the hospital and now it's gonna be the backyard of a development there on Matthews Road?
Damn, now that, pardon my language, yes, that, I guess that is a hard question that, that you, that you hit me with. I'm not gonna go ahead and get into exactly an, an argument per se on.
No, we don't need to argue.
On how that came to fruition. You know, yes, it was zoned thirty-two years ago, okay? Despite of what issues or arguments are in between, the property was zoned industrial, it had not been realized, or at least, you know, wasn't realized to us or anybody else that, hey, this is industrial and at the time, the land being purchased, those, those owners were free to do whatever they wanted to do, okay? So it really wasn't, in my opinion, there wasn't anything the county could have done at that point in time, except get a lawsuit by telling them that, no, you are not allowed to do what you wanna do on your property, which is actually zoned for. Now that you guys did form that group and, you know, it's brought up to attention, we are reevaluating and looking at many different areas now, I mean, that was thirty-two years ago zoned. Now we get to take a look at the map and sit here and start doing more planning. My Economic Development Director that we just hired in the county, phenomenal, that is one of the biggest things that he's doing right now also, so, people are in motion now because of y'all's voice, so.
Thank you.
However, we can't go back, shove the turd back in our butt from what happened, okay? The asphalt plant, it came, they were legally able to do so and would've cost the county millions of dollars if we would've, you know, fought against it, so by the time it actually came across to us, it was way too late.
So, I just wanna add to this, Clean Air and Sea, their Environmental Justice Director, partnered with us and actually sponsored a number of air quality monitors. I also heard from a lady, actually, Commissioner McCoy actually lives in that neighborhood, downtown Lowington, there's a, non, it, it, permit exempt, concrete plant or processing plant, that's created a lot of issues, so we have a monitor right behind that concrete plant and we're also have four other ones in the area, we have one more to install, so, we're gonna keep a very close eye on it. We have two asphalt plants, one point two miles apart, then there is one that is not current operating, but their permit is current, they are choosing, they didn't operate last year, they're choosing to keep their permit and that is close to bun level, I think? Anyway, they're all in a three point five mile radius with the town of Lowington smack in the middle. And the problem with two asphalt plants, Johnson Brothers and Highland Paving being so close, you have the people in the middle sandwiched between them, including a hospital, a nursing home and residences, and now you're gonna have homes right in the backyard of the asphalt plant, once DA Horton, they just got approved for R twenty homes, which are, I'm sorry, R ten, which are half acre lots. So, that's gonna be a problem and just so everybody knows, we've had people contact us, they find us via Google search and they ask questions and we've had at least three cancel contracts to buy because of our work. So, I hope people do their due diligence when buying properties behind the asphalt plant, cause that is not good for kids. And our air quality monitors, we will be getting monthly reports on the air quality around the area. Alright, so, that being said, I guess I'll go to the next topic. Why did you vote no on the non, not to fund nonprofits?
Oh Billy, here's a good one. What, I mean, the, the most period, point blank way to say this is, there was a lot going on, once again, that y'all didn't see, of nonprofits, nonprofits that had asked for money, that weren't nonprofits on there, they, some of them had been receiving funds from the county for many years, not being 501(c)(3), which is a requirement, so.
So you guys didn't do a yearly?
So, no, what we have is called a nonprofit committee that takes in all these applications and they review those applications, okay, and then they come to the board with a request. Well, the board had denied their initial request, told them, hey, listen here, told them some issues that were going on with it, saying, listen, we're not gonna be, you know, funding this, especially after year after year after year, the funding for nonprofits has increased and it's been a contentious issue and it wasn't something that we were willing to increase our first year in, did not wanna increase it. They still came back with an increase, still with some prop, nonprofits that were not on there the previous years, some of them didn't, you know, comply and there was also, I believe, several ethical issues going on with those nonprofits and, and the determination on that, so, the county commissioner said, no, we're not, you know, y'all came to us twice, so we're not funding nonprofits this year, so.
Alright, fair enough, I understand that, so, going forward, Kate Reichardt spoke very passionately about this issue at the last Commissioners' Meeting during the public hearing, or public hearing or comments area, period. If you get to vet these nonprofits and the committee does their due diligence to make sure everybody's got their appropriate paperwork and in good standing, would your minds change as far as that's concerned?
Yes, we're actually relooking at a way to handle nonprofits from here on out, whether it be a new process, a, a new way to organize a committee, or even, you know, the allocations that we provide in the applying process, I mean, that's something that we're actively looking at right now, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, really, I do, and I totally understand it and, you know, in hindsight, I, I tend to agree with your decision, I just, you know, it's tough when those that are doing the right thing are hurt in the process.
I one hundred percent agree.
Alright, let's see, so let's talk about the legislative priorities. So, I want you to explain to us, the jet port, why did the jet port come before school funding?
Ironically, ironically, the last town hall that I went to was not when I was a county commissioner, it was back when I was on the planning committee for the school board, it was over at Highland Middle School, right, middle school? And that's when I first heard mention of the jet port, okay? I first heard of the jet port and I'm in there, I'm like, we need more schools, we need more class seats, you know, the new school that you guys built down here at Benhaven didn't give me any additional class seats, you bought a new school, but it's not an additional school, you know, tons of issues, like, why are you concerned about working on a terminal, why are you concerned about working on the airport? Trust me, I was right there also.
Well, tell us.
I stood, I stood up and said, you know what, I have five kids, I need new school, I don't have a jet, I don't care about the airport, but let me tell you one thing, though, the one thing that we keep complaining about is the property taxes, okay? And I'll just give one example, and I mean, I can elaborate on other ways also, but just this one example is what really strikes it for me. Each home, residential, residential home brings in about a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars per year, that's not enough to fund, let alone sending one and a half kids to school, okay? And most homes here have more than one and a half kids, so, the resources that it takes also, that, that one thousand dollars has to get stretched out over is, is a lot. Now, to house one commercial aircraft in a hangar is, it brings in enough property tax revenue equivalent to a hundred and fifty residential homes, okay? So if we bring in ten aircraft, right, and that's, and we're gonna, hoping to bring in more than that, but bring in ten, especially with military contracts and different things, expanding the airport, making it more desirable, especially with the expansion that we see, we're also gonna be housing economic development in there, but one aircraft is equivalent to a hundred and fifty homes, so you bring in ten, that's, that, that's fifteen hundred home community, but they have no resources that we have to provide for them, okay? We don't have to send the air, the airplanes' kids to school, we don't have to, you know, send a sheriff, you know, or anything medical, no, it's fifteen hundred homes, resources just coming off the housing aircraft.
Did anybody have any other questions regarding the jet port before we move on? I mean, I think it's, I understand it, I guess.
It's, it's a business decision, that's why we took on the, that's why we took on the airport as the county, it is a business decision. Now, instead of humans being, you know, down here on a tax farm and that's all that we're here for, we're gonna try and bring businesses, jobs here, bringing in the growth, bringing in the business and also, you know, not using the human just for property taxes and for the resources.
So basically, housing the airplanes and.
Just housing airplanes brings that in, let alone bringing in other corporations that fly in, you know, either from Raleigh or not, or whatnot, starting up industrial parks for them to come down, house a business here and have a main hub, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, a much larger plan that it, that it plays into.
Now, I think Becky wants to ask a question and I know, I think I know what it is, but I'm gonna let her ask.
Well, considering that the jet port is not located near a major interstate and Lee County has one that's a stone's throw from US One and Triangle, how have the analytics been studied to see if that's even really an option for these big businesses to put their planes there when there's other competing airports in different counties?
Well, we can see that just off of like fuel sale history as well, on the people who have stopped here, so, once you increase like, say, runway length and expand it a little bit, you can house in larger aircraft that take more fuel, the fuel actually brings in a lot of money also, but people stopping here and that's why we want their businesses to come here and stop their planes, so they're not like leaving to go to Raleigh, not flying in just, you know, using us for our cheaper gas or even our storage, but we want their business to be housed here, so.
Okay. So, is there a report somewhere or some document somewhere that we can look at and?
As far as?
Any studies done, anything that you can provide us to document or back up everything you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm sure I can get with the new, like, engineers of record and stuff that we have, I mean, just based off of their studies and what other airports have brought in in the past.
We'd love to see that, not that we don't believe you, but just something to, to refer people to.
But, but as much income as other airports around here generate as well, I mean, we can get that information and I can get that to you.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, that, that was a hard pill for us to swallow and.
It was for me.
Yeah, so you understand. Okay, so. Okay, so here's, here's one that I have to ask. So, the property that actually was owned by the family of Susan Van Cannon, that had been sold a couple times over to Harnett Central Holdings, that is off Harnett Central Road and 401, so, that property had been zoned, was zoned farming R thirty or R forty, R forty. And in 2019, the prior board lis, heard the rezoning petition that came in, to rezone that to R twenty. And after listening and seeing all the documentation and looking to see if it would be an impact on the community, detrimental to the community, they determined that it would be, there wasn't enough schools, there wasn't enough, the fire station was also an issue and they turned it down, but here comes twenty, twenty? January twenty twenty, February? I wanna give the dates, anyway, two years later, and Commissioner Weatherspoon was on that, we all know that he is a family member to Montague, who owned Harnett Central, and one of the first rezoning hearings that came up was that one. And Susan Van Cannon spoke passionately, as a retired school teacher, why it would be detrimental to rezone from R forty to R twenty, the impact on the schools, on the area, and she did not even finish leaving the podium when he said, well, we're ready to vote, and it was approved. You could tell, you could see Mr. Montague on the right corner of the screen giving the thumbs up. Why did you vote yes?
Honestly, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at that particular property, I mean, that's not something that I'm, that's popping to the forefront of my mind right now, I can't recall that at the moment. Was it unanimously voted on?
No.
An approval?
No.
You know, yeah, see, I, I would have to go back and, and look at that.
It was three to two.
That's, that's something I would definitely have to go back and look at.
So, talking about rezoning, you know, we've talked about the water capacity situation and the change to the Udo in regards to, and, and, you know, it's all a little blurry and confusing to me, which I tried to understand and I think we did, someone actually did, we have an article on our website, which is harnettunited.org and there's information there about water capacity and what it all means. So, basically, water, for those that don't know, water capacity in our situation has more to do with the water leaving the properties than it is coming in. We have a lot of water off the Cape Fear, the problem is how it's processed and cleaned going back to the plant and eventually into the river. And the Department of Environmental Quality has a say on how much capacity we can be given for, you know, housing develop, or at one time, and we actually have to build another treatment plant to be able to catch up to the demands. So, because they, they had a vote, it, I think it was a special public hearing during a work session that you guys had, I think in October, if I'm not mistaken, and I know Kate here had, actually wrote the article about it. So, the vote was at the time to increase, to allow local developers a little bit of an upper hand over the larger national developers on how many homes can be permitted, you know, and paid into escrow, for water capacity, and the vote was to go from one hundred to two hundred. Why did you vote no?
I, I do recall that. I, I'm not a big fan of developers, period, so, granted, I'm in real estate, I don't, I'm right in, in a long lines where you are also, where things need to be planned out a, a little bit better, where, you know, we can't go and offer so much to certain people so they can come in and just buy it all out, okay? Too much growth and then the capacity getting, you know, overcrowded by permitting things way far out and only certain groups being able to get that allocation. and only certain groups being able to get that allocation, you know, I I I kinda wanted it to be more more of a process, I would say, for the developer to have to go through in that sense. Instead of just being able to be allocated two hundred and some lots or three hundred and they go, I mean, also for a developer standpoint also, cause I mean, say that he buys that just to sell those lots off, you know? You can go and have, you know, multiple builders in there, but the developments, you know, are gonna be limited to that capacity. Um, so there's there's a couple factors on on why I I voted no on that.
Alright, so you know, it's just you and Lou that voted no.
I I don't think that has anything to do, it ju- it just ha- happened to be happenstance, so.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, so you did something a few meetings, couple meetings ago that just made us so giddy and happy.
Oh, is this turning, or are you gonna hit me with like something negative real fast?
No. So at the end of the meeting, you had you know, there's several of us, we try to, at least two of us, two or three of us go to every meeting. We want to talk about issues that are important to us and um be present. We want you all to know that we're present, we're paying attention. Um, and one of the things that you said, that you wanted the board to have an opportunity at the end of each meeting to kind of address things that were brought up that don't necessarily, you you can't answer, and we feel like many times we don't get an answer. We then maybe two, three meetings down the road, see a vote and like, and we're like, oh my god, they totally ignored us. So whatever came from that?
Uh, my county manager uh is actually currently trying to work that into the agenda, figure out a good good way to get that in there and also, I mean, there, you realize there does have to be some sort of limitations. Like, I mean, if we're gonna include it, it can't be, you know, open and whatnot, um, too much time permitting, getting off task um, during the meetings that are scheduled, you know, we gotta fit that into the agenda, but my county manager is on that right now, so.
So let's talk about something else that is very passionate to you, and I know it's schools and the overcrowding issue and how to fix it. So before I let you have the mic, I find that the municipalities and the towns, when, you know, because because of the water capacity limitations that the county has now, I am, we are observing that a lot of the developers are going to the county or to the towns and asking for, you know, petition for annexation and then rezoning to R ten or R twenty. And we feel that they are not doing their due diligence. I, it seems like decisions are being made in silos and not talking to each other with the school board. I mean, they're compounding really the problem of overcrowding and not throttling a bit to try to let you guys catch up with the school overcrowding situation, you know, the jet port, economic development. And all that takes time, and our kids are paying the price for it. Um, like you, you have five kids, I've raised my children, but I have a granddaughter that will be going to Shawtown in the future, and it is a very big, very big concern. And I'm doing it also, all the fighting we're doing, we're doing for the kids, for our grandkids. And um, I've emailed the town about this. They also, I feel like they're not as transparent as Harnett County is. I will say, Harnett County's G I S system is the bomb.
It is amazing.
It is amazing. If there is a document missing, it's not intentional. It's because they haven't updated their database or something's wrong. All I have to do is send a message and boom, it it's there.
Yeah, we have phenomenal team.
Amazing, but Lollington is not like that. You, there's, there's no board meeting announcements on the uh the website or, you know, minutes, agendas, there's nothing. I actu- we actually own property in Lollington. And there's housing development, there's more construction going on in a phase three behind us. And I had to actually email, you know, the planning director to get the that document. I shouldn't have to do that. So I feel that, you know, it, the rezoning hearing is the only way for us to find out, is check the paper every day. So we keep posting about it and create events for it for people to show up, but, you know, it is not very forthcoming. And I feel like there needs to be more communication between the county and the towns and the municipalities, especially with this school overcrowding issue. So now I want to give the mic to you, and you and I spoke about what you envisioned as a way, as a Band-Aid for the school issue, but then you had another problem that needed resolved first.
Oh, I think I know what you're talking about now, and this is actually something that was started right at the very beginning of COVID, it was the twenty eighth school here in Harnett County. Um, back on the planning committee with the school board, I mean, ORID comes in and gives you projections on capacity with your school projected out over, you know, ten, twenty years. And we were already at capacity, I mean, we're at capacity in our elementary schools, middle, and, you know, high is getting there as well. Um, that's something why we're trying to push for more, you know, high school to be built, especially down our way on the western side right now. We were promised one, never got one. Um, however, the twenty eighth school is the Harnett County Virtual Academy. And what that does, um, and before COVID came out, and luckily COVID funding was able to to pay for this. Um, and this uh, this was kind of the plan, was to create an online school, uh, virtual school to where students, especially, you know, high schoolers, um, who are ready to either get in online colleges or those that are in distance learning, um, and some children actually perform better doing online courses. Um, the plan was to start that, so people can enroll in that, and that would help out with also uh, less school sit days, you know, some children have, you know, medical needs. Some parents uh in the military, PCSing, you know, being able to continue that school for the following year. For them to be able to enroll in this virtual academy. And right off the bat, it was projected to save about eight to fifteen percent of class seats, okay? And it was gonna be uh, there there are outlines on it now, but the original stuff was gonna be about, you know, had to maintain like a C average and have, you know, a teacher recommend for the program or have a parent that wishing, you know, to apply. Um, and then that came up with the problem, alright, well, that's not accessible to every student because of internet access. Um, and and this was also another culmination off of the high the increase that we've had with uh the homeschool population as well. This would also give, you know, people who are interested in homeschooling or the, you know, the alternative option.
Or hybrid perhaps?
Exactly, where they'll be able to have resources also, but it'll be cheaper and it's not a kid in a class seat. Um, which some, most kids need to be in a class seat. Um, my children, they need to be physically in the class seat in order to learn. Um, so problem was uh internet availability or accessibility in order to actually be a part of this, you know, it excluded many children. So that's why one of the number one goals is, and especially legislative priority is broadband.
Yeah.
Do broadband access, and my dream was actually, as soon as you hit Harnett County, countywide wifi. You know, I want countywide wifi, we're in the tech era, why don't we start, you know, jumping in on this, and then COVID hit. And then we started seeing more of a need for that with, you know, remote working, people working from home, remote learning with the kids. We saw the hit there when, you know, the kids that couldn't have access when they had to have it. So um, it really streamlined and pushed, you know, things further a lot faster, and I'm glad that we got to jump ahead of it and were able to use a lot of funding that's being piped down right now.
What is it planned for broadband?
We have a agreement, we have an agreement with Cloudwise, and the first phase is actually going in
Is it fiber or satellite?
It's gonna be a mixture, they're gonna be doing fiber and then remote locations as well
Okay.
For wireless. Yep, and you guys look it up, the Cloudwise, I mean, it's been mentioned in a lot of the meetings.
Yeah, I've heard it.
As well, so it's gonna be a great addition to Harnett County.
So you talked about the legislative priorities and the C I P, the new strategic plan. Um, well, three things, the legislative priorities, the C I P, and the new strategic plan, which was approved prior to the C I P and legislative priorities, right? So schools were number three on the list of legislative priorities, but first in the strategic plan. Is it because a shoe came before the foot?
No, legislative priorities is what we're asking them, you know, for the funding and the money for, you know? So um, it it is our first thing to do is to build schools. But our first thing to ask for money in order to help facilitate and start bringing in more income, in order to create an engine to get more money to build more schools down the road.
Well, your explanation of the jet port sort of answered that one.
So so that that was the reasoning behind that, you know, our legislative priorities, and we got a lot of funding right now, and it's, you know, going towards that. We're so blessed as a county to receive all the monies that we we are getting, so.
Well, you know, hearing you explain this just
Answers the why a little bit?
Absolutely, because, you know, as a resident and part of the community, non-political, we see that list of priorities, you heard me speak passionately about it. Um, not understanding, I understand it now. And I guess i- it's hard, listening and, you know, looking at the agenda and and now I'm understanding what a consent consent agenda is, which is already approved, it's just giving it the last blessing. I just didn't understand why the hearing came after the consent agenda, you know.
It's a lot to learn, a lot to pick up.
Oh, yes.
Still, I'm still learning.
A- and I want you to set me straight if we don't understand something, by all means, really. Um, alright, so being the str- the strategic plan, you know, is, I know that is a guide. It is not something, you know, a statue. Um, any possible amendments to the C I P based on the strategic plan you now have? Um, are you all happy with?
I'm I'm sure there will be some tweaking, I mean, there there's different things that we're gonna rank inside of those those different categories.
Based on the str- the strategic plan?
Correct, yeah, and I mean, that's, the main reason for that was the county was operating pretty much day to day prior to that. And once, you know, this new board got together, we're sitting here, it's like, okay, what are the goals? Like, what are you guys like shooting for? What is the county doing? What are all the employees? What is the the main goal that we're trying to get to? And there really wasn't one, it was just day to day operations and, you know, keeping it going, and it wasn't really forecasting it out there. Everybody's kicking and screaming, you know, but there wasn't a plan that as a unit, everybody was working towards.
The twenty fifteen strategic plan was not referred to at all, the one you guys had before?
No, I mean, that's six, six years, seven years later, yeah, it's pretty much, the whole county has changed within the last seven years as well. So, but for us to all work towards the same goal, have legs in order to get there, and I mean, obviously, you're gonna start tweaking your goals over time as well. You know, just a little bit, I hope the next board that comes through
That's gonna be, yes.
Correct, yes, it'll be up to, obviously, the next board that comes through in order to pick up the torch and keep running with it.
And I think it's a good, good time to to actually say, you know, we've had a lot of um candidates come to us. And we are definitely researching, we're looking at what platforms, you know, what their campaign promises are. And, you know, we we're asking questions, and we welcome all of them to have a town hall with us. Um, we want to be a voice of influence, good or bad. Um, we want to to be something positive, our group something positive in our county and strive to have, you know, better schools, policing, fire, just not have, we don't wanna become Fuquay. I mean, it is, Fuquay's bad, and all these farmers, bless their hearts, selling their properties for, you know, whatever reason, uh, they may have, some, their kids don't want to. I've also heard that if they do pass on the property to their children, they can't afford to buy the ta- or pay the taxes on it, so they end up selling. I mean, there is a gamut of reasons.
There there is, I mean, you also see it with the whole generational shift that that we go through, and also population increases. Um, they're not making any more land, people can't stop having babies. You gotta put them somewhere in a culmination of things, you know, what used to be farmland and a a family farm for generations, you know, it it isn't appealing anymore, you know?
Is it on your radar or anybody's radar as far as the Board of Commissioners or the county to try to salvage some of this farmland?
Yes, exactly, I mean, that's our our main goal is what we're trying to do. Um, the the uh strategic plan, you know, we're trying to work different areas also, like set up an industrials and set up, you know, some commercial areas, expand on what we have already. And it was a lot of missing pieces too with uh not having the Economic Development Director that we had. Um, being able to sit and look and preserve, that's why we came up with kind of what exactly is Harnett County? What do we want, why do people come here? What are we trying to, you know, preserve and 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 maintain that? And that's, stra- strategic plan's gonna help us outline exactly that, and it's gonna make us pick out certain spots and help us plan geographically as well, so.
Did you see that video, viral video that was posted, um, I actually posted in the group of the open house that they had for a reasonably priced home in Harnett County? In Raleigh, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, now we know why they're coming down here.
Well, that's that's going on, hey, it's it's going on everywhere, I mean, in in my community, I
That was crazy.
I own a real estate firm, and um, a- as soon as you get a home in, I mean, it's gone, and it's multiple offers, and it's over. And and you see this everywhere, and it's, and of course, yeah, of course, they wanna migrate down here. It's a forty-five minute drive to Raleigh instead of sitting forty-five minutes on the Belt Line, you get a little bit lower taxes, a little bit more house for your money.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna open the floor up for questions.
Um, my name's Cat Quill, um, I know, you know, about animal control and
About animal control?
The laws, the facilities, what?
The animals, uh, the the volunteers that are being counted on, um, they're not gonna lie on. And there's ones, they're saying that the um um, monies aren't there for, for, what, y'all make the budget?
Yes, that's that's correct, and 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 we're coming into the budget year, coming back up now, and and there's a lot of we're coming into the budget year now, and that's something that we're gonna be addressing. Also, you have to understand with the water treatment center expanding, where the location is now. Um, it's it it's it's gonna encroach on that, so the facility will move, and that's going to be moving up in our C I P. We stated that in in our last meeting, the the need for that. Um, my county manager's going out actually this week, he has a uh a walkthrough out there, and he's gonna come back and give us a brief on exactly what needs to be done, how fast we can get something done, but we do hear the need, we see the need. Um, I've talked to several people that were employees at the animal shelter. Um, seeing some of the leadership, the way that they were treated there and why they left, lack of funding, lack of resources. So yes, I'm, I I am tracking, and we are working on that, so.
Anybody else? Yes?
Just as a follow up to your question, I'm uh writing a whole year thing about it. It's certainly comfortable, we've been many times asking for a show of how they are for a while. In this period, you're studying, you're playing on location.
It it has, I I, we have not discussed that yet after after you brought that up, so, but it it is something that's gonna be tackled. Um, I have uh bi-monthly meetings with my county, the county manager now, and I I I can't emphasize enough how blessed we are to have new county manager we have and a new economic development director.
Pretty happy with them.
I am extremely happy, um, great spearheaded individuals, um, that that are taking this county exactly where we needed to go and doing what we hired them to do. So very fortunate, but that is something that we're working. So, very fortunate, but that is something that we're working on. As fast as we possibly can, cuz we gotta figure out where to go, it was brought up the other day that they wanted to move it down there on the old Ben Haven School and I was like, no.
I heard that.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, yes, we do need one. I'd be happy to house an animal shelter in the western side, it's not centrally located, I know that ninety percent of the animals do come from our area though. Um, so finding the spot for it, um, is, is what we're working on now. There's a lot of land that the county does have that we're looking at, so there's, it's moving. I always say the wheels of government turn slowly, there's, especially when they're fueled by excuses, but not excuses, I'm working on it.
Will you be able to address the funding for salaries and, um, budget overall before you have a building? Cuz that's probably gonna take a while.
Uh, yeah, of course, I'm, I'm seeing already, there's gonna have to be some sort of reorg down there anyway. So, a- a- another position or two possibly. Um, so it's, it's structuring, it's reorganizing and, and figuring out exactly where to go.
What about the animal ordinances, one of the things that, especially with so many people moving into the area? We, our, our animal laws are pretty archaic. And, you know, I've had to call animal control on my neighbor's dog that were out twenty-four, seven, doesn't matter what time, as long as they have a little house, a little water, a little food, and a little shelter with some straw, nothing can be done about it. So, um, then you have animals that are tethered outside, you know, and this is okay. This is just archaic. What can we do to update animal ordinances to be more in line with other counties?
That's gonna take, obviously, either a group, a committee, or, you know, getting together with staff, try and figure out how exactly or compile a list of what the other ordinances are and what we are gonna apply here.
Are you committing to helping us do that?
God, y'all gotta put me on the spot. I, 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 I am for animals, not for their suffering, okay? And I, I agree, I, I personally can't tell you exactly where the leash laws are. I couldn't read those to you, I'm sure you've looked into them and stuff, okay? I, that, that's not something that I know right off the top of my head, not trying to be insensitive. But we talked about a lot of other things that are going on right now in the county, um, you know, hey, as soon as I got some schools coming in, as soon as I can get some, you know, funding for, for other departments and stuff too, I mean, we're, we're pushing, trying to spread the pie out across everybody, okay? Um, not trying to be insensitive, not trying to blow it off, but there is a lot more priorities and I'm currently.
Oh, I understand, we just want to be able to form some sort of committee, advisory committee to help refresh and update the animal laws.
Would I be willing to look at that and see exactly where we are and, and, and participate in revising them if need be, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, that's something I'm sure I can get the cooperative extension to help me out with as well, so. Are, are you familiar with the cooperative extension that we have here in the county? They're phenomenal also, so, yeah.
Anybody else?
We get a request from the school board and then we decide if that is gonna be feasible or not. So, I mean, we are the ones that provide funding for the school board, but they come to us with their needs. The, the good thing is, now, now, has that been recently? It has been? Last two years, with, within the last two years? Okay, cuz, cuz I will say now that the commissioners, all the commissioners on the board now are proactive with schools. They are, they, they are more engaged than what, when I was on the planning committee for the school board, what the prior boards had been doing with getting involved. I mean, we are actually going out there and, and looking for these spots. And if something comes available or an opportunity, that's something that we would pass down and pursue to them a- as an option, you know?
Are you talking about the elementary school? Behind Serenity?
Uh, well, I mean, I, it, it wouldn't matter what school district they're in, I, I would assume. So, if, if they're not on this side and they're not in our, in the district, then they wouldn't be going to that school. Yep, and then, I mean, with.
Cross, crossing county lines?
With that though, with, with the schools act, from my understanding, and I'm not on the school board or on the Board of Education, so I'm, I'm not gonna talk to them, but from my understanding, there's an ADN, an average daily number, okay, on what, you know, each school has and that's their reporting. Am I, am I, am I right or wrong? So, so if a student would transfer to another district, then they would have to sign off on basically that funding allotment for that student. Okay, so Wake County would have to s- sign off on the funding for that student seat. So that, that wouldn't be, you know, it, it, it would be taking away from, from o- other stu- you know, other class seats if there, you know, was an overcrowding issue, um, but I mean, we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
On a local level.
I remember when that came through and I'm like, what, they added maybe a hundred and twenty class seats if that, if that? I mean, you're gonna build an entire school and not have, in addition, it, it's a lot of poor planning, poor planning. Uh, then you got a school board, former school board member. And, and also to caveat back to that is I, that was my question, it's like, why don't you build the school bigger? If you know that you need it bigger, why don't you, the excuse is, or the reasoning is, is, well, then we have to hire more staff. We have to have another principal, it's like, okay, well then, that's more jobs. Like, that's more t- you know, I mean, I, I understand that, that it, that costs more money, however, uh, I think it's easier to build, I, I mean, easier to hire more teachers than it is to build a new school, okay? Oh, no, no, their, their answer for that is to go ahead and throw more huts and stuff at it, so. So, we just gotta get better at planning, I mean, with the growth, planning for that larger class seats and, you know, uh, you know, larger capacity in these schools, I mean, we see that it's happening, you go to North Raleigh, you go to Wake County, I mean, they have
They bus kids.
Thousand kids.
They actually bus kids, yeah.
And it's, you may have a principal and two assistant principals, however, you have a, you have schools in class seats.
So, I hear Angie's got a question.
I'd have to look into that.
So many houses are going up in that area.
I'll, I'll, uh, get your contact info and I'll, I'll find that information out and get back to you.
So, I have a question regarding the school board and intriguing minds want to know. And maybe somebody's got the answer, how is Commissioner Matthews allowed to serve on the board and the Board of Commissioners, on the school board and Board of Commissioners? I thought he was.
He's not on the Board of Education.
But he's superintendent. Okay.
He's an employee of the school district. So, if this is the type of thing though, is that you say something.
No, we are asking questions. We're not saying, we are asking.
Okay, so, Brooke Matthews is an employee of the school district, he is the deputy superintendent.
Okay.
He, he's not the superintendent, he's the deputy superintendent and he's in charge of certain areas in the school district. He ran, like every American can, for county commissioner and he won.
I totally appreciate the answer, which is why we asked the question, we're not making assumptions, we're just asking and I appreciate that answer.
He just speaks very direct, don't mind that. Yeah, he's.
That's okay, I'm from Panama originally, so, yeah.
Yep.
Yes. We're asking the question because it's been brought up. And that, and I appreciate your answer, this is something that's been brought up, it's not something that we are miscum- communicating people and, and, you know, we're just asking and I appreciate the answer.
And he's a deputy, deputy superintendent, he doesn't have the, he doesn't have that authority. Does he have the ability to raise, I, I mean, Matt, Matt has the ability to, I think, if, I think that's how it works. As a commissioner, they have the power.
Correct.
Would he recuse himself?
The county commissioners have nothing to do with the contract with the superintendent. The contract with the superintendent is done by the school board. And, you know, I would, it's a very, very, very in-depth process, negotiation back and forth and there were some big league lawyers involved and stuff like that and that's how it was.
We provide the funding and would have to bu- you know, obviously bless off on the budget for that.
I appreciate that answer.
That wouldn't be, I mean, something that I would say that we would vote on his raise, you know, so.
Any other questions?
And, and I would say that would be a conflict of interest in ethically.
Yes, I was gonna say it would.
He would re- re- refuse himself, period. No, that's. No, he, he votes on the money that's going to the schools.
So, there could be a little bit of a conflict of interest.
Uh, I mean, he, he's not out here trying to get personal pleasure, profit and gain off of his position in the school board and voting on that, you know, as being a county commissioner, I mean, this is not something that he's out there for. I mean, he's a genuine man, from my knowledge, that I know of him personally, who stepped up in order to help out the community, he has been a principal, um, you know, for this county, uh, you know, multiple times. Um, and he's, he's a great, great man, in, in my opinion, so I don't.
I appreciate him.
I, I, I don't think that he would, uh, he would recuse himself of something that he even felt he needed to keep in arm's reach.
And I, and I, I, I trust you saying that and I, I believe you are correct. And I appreciate this, this has been good. Yeah. Yes.
Yes, we do have an ethics class that we have to take. Oh, yeah.
So, that is a requirement?
Yes.
Is it as extensive as maybe even the Realtor one is?
It, I would say it's, I mean, I would say it's comparable, I mean, it's ethics training, so, yeah.
And the second question, um, since Harnett County is your last stand, do you plan to stay in government? Or do you plan to further go further up the ladder or stay in the local government?
I love where. I love where I'm at currently and I'm doing what I can during my tenure, okay? So, right now, I've got two years and nine months left. And I'm doing about two and a half days worth of work each day just to bring us current. So, um, I, I, I can't tell you what the future brings. I, I can tell you that, um, I, I don't have aspirations to go any higher, I'm not a politician. No, but, not, not for me, I didn't wanna do this. I, I, I hate to say it, I mean, I, I really didn't, I, I, uh, I felt, I, it was my community and moral obligation in order to run. Um, I love the hand that I have in now being involved where I'm at, at the level that I'm at, having just a wide variety of things. I love all the departments that I could be involved in, um, learning a lot, you know, with that. I was right there where you guys were with the same questions, not understanding inner workings or how something happens, the why. Um, figuring that out, I mean, we really do have a great county, we are blessed, you know, despite a little odds and ends here and there, it's little qualms and stuff that we have, we are truly blessed for the county that we have. And I will say, we have great leadership, I do have faith in the leadership that we have. And I believe that everybody that runs for this position, I would hope that you're not doing it for any sort of gain because there really isn't a whole lot. Especially at this level, you need more people, I really wanna get away from the party of things, you know? Um, and we were talking about that earlier, about how people used to go to work, you know, and talk about sports or different things, but now it's an everyday conversation, no matter where you go, is politics, okay? My grandparents and parents would go vote, they wouldn't even tell each other who they voted for, okay? That was between them and the polling booth, now you get, come out and it seems like everybody has to talk about that and that is the main topic of the conversation. I really hope at the county level, state level, country level, we get back to not being party oriented, not being politically oriented, but just being we the people for once, okay? I, i- it's been a long, long time, so. Y'all doing what you're doing, other people that get involved, I mean, it's we the people, alright? There shouldn't be any qualms or bickering, nobody is getting off this planet alive, so. We're all neighbors, just continue to look out to your left and right, so. But no, I have no aspirations to go any higher and you got about two years and nine months left to me.
Anybody else? Well, thank you so much for allowing us to grill you. I think we've pretty much covered, I think we covered a lot. Um, I think we were able to, um, come up with some answers that clears up a lot of things. We wanna support the work you guys do, we just needed to understand. And this town hall has really helped us understand and like I told you earlier, anytime that you, you're in our group, you see a post that is a little confusing or the facts are not exactly like it is, just let me know and, you know, one of the things that we strive to do and, um, we're trying to build up our website and it's HarnettUnited.org. Um, and it's the spinoff of the asphalt plant, but, you know, all the other issues that, you know, we saw. But we also wanna highlight the good. We strive to be fact-based. And we always try to put any links that are, you know, corroborate the information we're posting. A lot of times, we can't do that because it's how we understand things. And we're normal people, we're not politicians, we're not lawyers, you know, sometimes we read things and not exactly interpret it, you know, the way we think they should be and, you know, we stand to be corrected and we welcome it. We want to put the right information out there, so.
Well, one thing that I will ask, one thing that I will ask is, I mean, we're obviously all out for the same common goal, okay, the betterment of this county, okay, the betterment of working with each other and making this a better place. Now, please be more positive with saying, I'm not saying that you aren't, but with your posts or with things that are put out in public, let's keep it positive so we can promote this county. So, people don't look at Harnett County, it's like, oh, what are the issues going on down there? Like, how can, you know, I, and I, I'd hate for it to be, you know, just over a, something that's a qualm, not life or death situation. It's just something that may be a, a, you know, some maybe misconstrued over, but we're pushing away businesses that we're actually trying to attract.
Fair enough.
Okay, like, we are blessed. Okay, like, we are blessed here in Harnett County, and we, there's nothing wrong with taking pride in that. Okay, but we gotta preserve that, and we need to boost us, because we all grow together, okay?
Understood, and we appreciate that. Yes. Did you have a question?
I will say, we all have to do our own part, okay? Matt Nickel can control Matt Nickel and his family. You know, everyone else can control, you know, their own family, and and what we can all do here, we all need to do our part, okay? The sheriff, I mean, that's not something that I can force in to do. You've, anybody that's heard me talk has heard about how I want body cameras, okay?
Was it funded? There was money for body camera?
Body cameras have not been funded. We funded in-car cameras. That was, that are being installed, if not already installed now, so. Now, body cameras, I understand it's not the same. Now, I can't force the sheriff in order to have body cameras, that's that's. No, no, but that he would fund in-car cameras, and it was actually in lieu of giving raises to the to the deputies in the department. We did that. We held him to getting in-car cameras, and it was paid for out of asset forfeiture funds, okay? That's something that we had to sign off on approving, letting him go ahead and do that, where it was more along the lines of he requested that and 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 he got it, but that he was, it 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 was, eh eh, correct, correct. So, I mean, that's not something that, you know, we went out and just funded. Along the lines of body cameras, I am a huge advocate for body cameras, but what are the, what are the reasons why we we need body cameras? Is it, it's a trust issue, is it not? Now, once again, I talk about when I was a kid, you know, police officers would drive by and kids would run out and wave to them. They would aspire to be police officers. You ask a kid, hey, what do you wanna be? I wanna be a, I'm gonna be a police officer when I grow up. The climate and environment that we live in nowadays, and honestly, I think it's been, you know, whether media, porch-, eh, a lot of things do happen. If you're right, you're wrong, you're wrong. A a camera's not gonna stop you from being a piece of trash, okay? You know, wh- wh- you know, i- it's not gonna stop the individual from acting a a certain way, no, no matter what side of that camera that they're 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 on, okay? What we really need to work on is getting back to the community aspect of it, to where police are revered as, you know, pro- there to protect and serve, to where children are going back out and being like, hey, I aspire to be that. Instead of when a cop drives by, now they run away, they think, hey, what did I do now, or whatnot. We all play a part in that, and once a- once again, it's it it's up to all of us in order to change that. Eh, I hate it when I go out to a restaurant down the street and I have, uh, you know, someone sitting there, a family sitting there with their child, and the child's refusing to eat, and the mother's like, hey, you see that policeman over there? If you don't eat your broccoli, I'm gonna have him come arrest you. I mean, that's ingraining that at a young age in these children's minds. And I mean, it's even something as small as that that we can change, you know, the perception of law enforcement. Do you have some bad apples? Yes, you have a lot of good ones that are here to protect and serve. Nobody who, whoever straps on a vest and a gun walks out here every day in order to protect and serve has got more, you know, courage than I do, okay? And in the climate and environment we live in nowadays, I think we should be doing more in order to help them with their job, okay, instead of giving them su- such a hard job, okay? That now, they're there to to protect and serve us, okay? Community service, you know, customer service, there are certain things that can be changed on their side also, is what I'm getting at, you know, it's but we need to be able to encourage that and promote that, because, eh, could you imagine a a c- a county without without law enforcement? You know, saying, you know, like, what can you do with the sheriff with the bu-, well, cut it, cut his funding. I hear that a lot. Cut the sheriff's budget until, you know, he does what you want. You know what that does? That hurts the department. That doesn't hurt that one man. That's not gonna make him change his decision. That hurts our department. That hurts every citizen around you, so. Yes, sir, here, we got more questions. I didn't know this was a campaign event, sitting here, but I mean, i- 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 it's, I'm fine with him afterwards, but I mean, if not, I have to let everybody that's in here.
Yeah, there's three candidates here.
Four candidates, four.
Oh, okay, sure. Where is he? Mister? Sure, if you wanna address that.
I don't mean to be rude or disrespectful, it's like, this isn't a eh eh, this isn't a campaign, uh, event. No worries. Do you have anything to add, though, as far as, uh, what you heard? Hey, I'm all for body cameras, so, I mean, I've already said that before. It's just a matter of, it it's a matter of getting them implemented and and get them out on the streets, okay? So, and that's not something that Matt Nickel, the county commissioner, can make happen. So, as much as he wants it himself.
So, we, thank you for coming, and we welcome you, and anytime you want to have a town hall, we're welcome to have you as a guest, for sure. Yes.
I I don't wanna turn this event right now into something that is talking about, you know, another individual that I don't have control over, you know, i- in in that sense. That's not something that, uh, the sheriff runs his department how he sees fit, okay? I'm sorry, so.
Well, this has been super, super informative. I'm tha- I thank you for being in that hot seat. I hope we didn't give you too many, you know?
Too bad.
Well, good, I told you it wouldn't be. And any of your fellow commissioners that wanna take the seat, they're welcome to come as well. We promise to treat them with respect, and just like we had you, we have questions, them, answer them, and, you know, people want to hear from them.
Good deal.
So, is there any questions on the Facebook Live that we didn't address? Okay, well, thank you for, everyone, for coming. We have a very large group here. Thank you so much for coming, and.